All right, it is 7:00 and I am going to bring this meeting to order. Will everybody rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Cheryl, will you do roll call, please?
President.
President?
President.
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 So, do I have a motion to excuse Jared?
I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Couch.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Councilmembers Corningay and Kinzer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. I can't see.
It's just the agenda.
Okay, sorry.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The consent agenda, items 1 through 7, do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Make a motion to pass consent agenda, items 1 through 7.
All right. So, I have a motion by Councilmembers Corningay and Owen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And we have no special guest tonight, so we will do the staff reports. Before we do this, just one thing that I'd like to say before we start that. So, at our next meeting on December 5th, we are going to host Senator Keith Waggoner and State Representatives Carolyn Eslick and Robert Sutherland, and they'll be talking about the legislative agenda and the issues. And that is going to be here at 7:00. It'll be in this room. Usually at the first of the month, we're in the work session room in the fire station, but we're going to be doing it here. So, all right. So, we have a new grandpa in the room.
That's right. So, I'm off most of this week. Our youngest child had her son yesterday, about 24 hours ago, so we got a brand-new grandbaby sitting up in the hospital up in Bellingham. All's doing well. Ty Tucker Conken came into the world right at about this time last night, and baby and mama are doing good, and we've only taken a couple of her pictures so far. But very, very excited and going to be in and out, off and on, all week. I told my daughter that I was going to go to city council so I can tell everybody about it, and she had no doubt that I was going to do that. Just a couple of other things. We're still on kind of on track for a January 29th graduation of our newest officer. He's doing well in the academy. Sergeant McElwath and I are going to go down and take him out to dinner and get the real scoop, and then send a couple of other officers down here a little bit later to see some of his training and watch him go through and see how he's doing. But everything should be going well. And we've had our record sergeant, Tamara Blunt, out. She had surgery about three or four weeks ago. She's going to be coming back part-time next week, just getting back in the swing of things. She had just some corrective surgery done. Took a little while to get back in the swing of things. And then, we're just prepping for the hoolie belation. I think I'm saying that right for this weekend.
Joanne seemed to think you guys had it all together, so...
Yeah. Dan was going to take care of it, and we got plenty of bodies, and it pretty much just goes whether we do anything or not. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Chief Klinger?
Well, we've got our first new used ambulance in, and it's striped, and we've got it set and ready for tomorrow. The Department of Health will be here tomorrow to go through and do their inspection to the final last step for our ALS license, so after tomorrow, we should be done with that. We also want to let everybody know that, is it right after the parade at 5:00? 6:00? 5:30, 6:00? After the parade, there'll be, once again, the baked potato feed for the girls softball team out in the fire truck base.
All right. So, just right after the parade?
Right after the parade, so you can watch parade and come straight down.
All right. Great, thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Freiburger?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick report on the projects. As you probably noticed, State Street's essentially done. Earned out pretty well, I think, and should be a good precursor to the library going right in there in that same vicinity. Fruit Dale is also complete. Last little polishing touches were done a week ago with the striping being done. And so, we're in the closeout on both of those projects. The SR20 sidewalk from Township to Fruit Dale is also complete and in closeout. And the West Nelson, Beatty, and Bennett sewer project, the pipe has been completed and tested and accepted. The only thing remaining is paving a part of the Nelson Street trench, and that project will be done as well. So, we've been fortunate to have the good weather and get those late bidding projects in, but they are done and successfully so. Tonight, I beg your indulgence on the late materials that's on your dais tonight. We bid two projects on the 15th, just before I left on my short vacation, and I had intended to get this one on the council agenda early, but I didn't make it due to other demands, mostly with the library and some things that were going on there. So, tonight, I'm recommending award of contract 2018, TW04, the 2018 wastewater treatment plan improvements project, Fisher Instruction Group Incorporated of Burlington. Their bid came in about 18% under our engineer's estimate. There is a copy of the bid tabulation with the memorandum there, and that was good news. All three bids were under our estimate slightly. We had one fourth bid that was also competitive, but they forgot to include their bid bond with their bid, and it was non-responsive. They would not have been the low bid anyway. So, we're anxious to get this project under contract and get it done, get it started before the end of the year. Again, this project will provide some hydraulic improvements to the plant. It'll raise the grit tank box, which we've had threatened to overflow several times in the last year, mostly due to higher flows we're getting in some of these intense storms, and also upgrading and putting a second pipe in for our line running from the plant distribution system into the aeration basin. So, those two combined things amount to about a $200,000 project, and it's the first, as I've been discussing, of number you'll see over the next year in a sequence of upgrades to the treatment plant. So, I recommend that you award this contract to Fisher Group, and the motion is on the second page of the memorandum.
So, if there's no objection, I think I'd like to move this to new business so everybody has a chance to kind of read through it, since some of the council members came in late. I do want to point out to the council members that on the second page, under analysis, second paragraph, it does show that there is funding for this, and it's telling you out of which budget it is coming. So, not unless you're ready to vote, but otherwise, if you need more time to read through it, up to you.
Anybody want more time?
Yeah, we'll hold it then. We have one who wants to, so we'll hold it for new business if that's okay, Mark.
Okay, and that's fine. And the other one to report on is we also closed bids on the Central Skagit Library preload project. The bids were, I'm sorry I didn't bring a bid tabulation with me for that, but the bids did come in below my estimate by, I think it was about 15% or so. So, it was a good result. Library Board is happy with that, and Aaron had signature authority due to, under one of the resolutions that you passed earlier, to award contracts above this amount, and so he has already authorized award, and I sent the award letter out on that yesterday. SRV Construction, same contractor that did both the West State Street project and the Beatty sewer, was a little bitter, and they're anxious to get moving on that project and be ready to get that going. Just report on that. Just a couple of other things. You've probably heard some reports about some issues we've had with contaminated materials under the Central Skagit Library building site. We have been working with GeoTest, our geotechnical contractor, to analyze those materials. We think they were paint products that were dumped over the years under the building, the old feed barn in the crawl space underneath. It kind of looks like that. We've got the analysis back, and we've found a disposal site that will take the material. It's up at the Rabanco site in Republic, I mean, Ferndale. So, we set up Friday for the containers to load that out. We'll use the rental excavator in our own forces to do that, and hopefully get that all hauled out of there and cleaned out so that we can start the preload project, probably the second week in December is what we're thinking will happen there, depending on the contractor's schedule. So, that's moving ahead, okay? And we had one other surprise yesterday. I was on vacation on Monday, but Nathan called me out to look at a few things to cite, and while we were scraping around there, seeing how far that contamination went to the north, we hit a big clunk and found about a 30,000-gallon tank there with an unknown black oily substance down in the bottom of it. So, Ross Widener was down in Mount Vernon at the time. Fortunately, we had him come up, and his company took a sample of that. We should have the results back on Thursday. It possibly is molasses. We don't know exactly what all they were doing there, but it doesn't appear to be hydrocarbons, but it's been in there a long time. I've heard rumors, I think Phil actually mentioned to someone today that it might have been from a molasses operation they had on site there, and I heard that yesterday separately, so that probably has some credibility. And if that's the case, it'll be relatively simple. We should be able to pump the fluids out and take them and treat them at the treatment plant. Otherwise, we'll have to find a sort of site to take that, which could be, they have a hazardous waste site down in south of Seattle, Tacoma area, that takes that kind of thing. So, been many surprises on that project, but I think we're about to the end of digging, and we'll be coming up out of the ground, and it's relatively straightforward when you start coming out of the ground. So, I think the rest of the reports will be fairly routine after this. That's all I had tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayorman?
I have a couple of items. The first, in the finance world, we have a couple of sick leave donation requests that we're working on. We have two employees right now who qualify for donated sick leave, and as you know, the city may petition employees to donate some of their sick leave to these individuals if they don't have enough to bridge the time they're out with a serious health issue. In the world of HIPAA disclosures and those types of things that are out there right now, it's getting to where we can't discuss all the details, the medical issues that people are facing in that, so we're being somewhat quiet about what the nature of everything is, but we do have two people. One of them is an extension of a previous sick leave donation we did, and the other one is an initial request. We're estimating it would be about possibly 10 weeks if it's needed. But even though we can't discuss the details, I wanted to make sure we informed city council so that we're fully transparent about those type of items that we're doing. The second item, I had talked previously about a request for proposal for financing for the library, and I'm taking one additional step since we talked last. I sent our RFP, our Request for Proposal, to Deanna Gregory, who's an attorney with Pacifica Law Group, and they're going to take a look at it and make sure our language in the RFP and the proposed contract meets all the qualifications, so that note or that bond we do will be a tax-exempt bond. And so, when we send it out to bid to the different banks, it will be more attractive. Hopefully, then, we would get more banks bidding on the price of that bond that we get. Hopefully, we would get a better interest rate. So, that'll take us about a week to get through the disclosure readings and those things. We'll probably send that request out the first week of December, give the banks two or three weeks to respond. Of course, we hit the holidays, so it'll probably be the first part of January. We'll get the results back from that. And just a couple of things I'm wanting to do is, we have a construction period that will go from this next spring to about April of 2020. So, what we're going to try to do is structure an interim loan for that period of time. I've had some success working with banks on doing that before. Sometimes you can get rates like 0.6% during the construction period. At the end of the period, then, we do the permanent loan, but we try to put something in the contract now that protects us against rates going up too high in the meantime. So, there's a couple of extra steps we want to do in there, but we're looking to save some of the interest and carrying costs during the time of the construction of the library. So, you'll see that coming out here pretty soon. We'll probably, if we get some positive responses, I say early in 2019, we'll be coming back to city council with approval on that financing package.
All right.
Doug, I have a question for you on that. I know that when we built this building here, we used funds also from the rural USDA's Rural Development, and Kurt Pearson, who was our former senator, happens to be our local contact person over there, and I thought maybe we could get some of those funds from him?
You know, we can send an RFP to them just as well and see if they can look in what their requirements are for that and see if they can offer something that might meet that same criteria. The thing there, I'd have to look at a USDA loan, is what amount of time do they give you to repay that? And under the agreement with the library district, there's a maximum 20-year term and some different things like that, so we'd have to find out what they would offer and what their requirements are, and then see how that fits with our agreement with the library district, just to make sure everything lines up correctly.
Just a thought.
Sure. Good idea.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Owen?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Ms. Corningay?
No.
All right. Ms. Kinzer?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. DeYoung?
Well, the holidays, it's a busy season. I spent four hours today over in Mount Vernon with a fusion group of nonprofits and non-government organizations, as we did a simulation for experiencing poverty with about 100 folks, and it was quite the experience, and eye-opening, and educational, and emotional for some folks. I'd recommend it to anyone who's asked to participate. Additionally, had the pleasure of participating with scores of volunteers. We had over 60 volunteers serving over 400 folks at Helping Hands Food Bank for the 44th Annual Cedar Woolley Community Thanksgiving Dinner, and no one left with an empty belly, and lots of seconds were handed out. So, lots going on, and I'm glad we had a great Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone else did as well.
Thank you. Ms. Denly? Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to commend our community on shopping local last Saturday. I heard nothing but a lot of really good reports from our merchants downtown. I was out and about, and they were all extremely pleased with the number of people that turned out. They all seemed to be doing well, and I saw lots of smiles on their faces, and I saw lots of people in town. So, thank you all for that. Also, there's, in my opinion, we should also, I noticed in our minutes that Louis was here last month and taught, or last time.
Last meeting.
His business, being in business for 40 years, we did honor Cascade Fabrics and Bobby Kelly for that. I would certainly like to see us do that again for Louis.
Sure.
And so, that was one of the other things. And then, I brought this along tonight because at the Chamber of Commerce, we have a giving tree. This is started by the Food Bank, the Helping Hands, but what they've done is they've collected names of people, young people, and on the tree, you can find little things with a request for items, like this one is an eight-year-old boy who would like Legos or toy cars. Imagine that. And then, there's also a needs category, which says he needs socks and pants and shoes and sweaters. Then, you get into teenagers, and you know, they want other things, but some of them don't put sizes on, so we don't really know what size a particular 11-year-old girl might need. But there's other things on there. So, they're going to give these out on December 20th, so if you want to pick one of these up, or several, or a whole family, this is one family right here. Then, please do so and bring the gifts back to the chamber wrapped with the tag on it. And we will make sure that they get to the Food Bank and just, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I picked up my little tag for a family.
Yep.
Yep. So, I too want to thank all the volunteers who helped with the Thanksgiving dinner. I was with Ms. Corningay over at the kitchen where we deboned 43 turkeys. It was quite a bit of turkeys, and then dished up 108 meals that were served by those who were delivering them, so meals on wheels. So, it was a great experience, and it was actually a wonderful way to experience Thanksgiving. I also want to thank Joanne for another year of brilliant lights. I don't know if you have been walking through town since Saturday, but after dusk, those lights are on, and they're absolutely beautiful. And our own Joanne Lazarone is the one who organized that, and she had 15 helpers who helped her complete that. So, I think...
Did she do it before it started raining?
And she did do it before it started raining. That's absolutely right. So, Mr. Freiburger mentioned the project on Beatty, and that is in part for the Habitat for Humanity project that's going to be happening with our high schoolers, and they have set a, and, oh, gosh, what, a...
A diggy.
Yeah, right, a diggy. Yeah, for January 19th at 3:00, correct? Yeah. So, there'll be posters, be aware of that, and it might be something fun to kind of come out and enjoy. So, again, congratulations to Chief Tucker, and we will now move on to public comment. I will begin public comment at 7:22. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Okay. Thank you. Phil, be sure to give your name and address. Thank you.
Philip Murray. I live at 223 State Street, Cedar Woolley. I'm a little concerned about how you go about surplusing government equipment that city people have paid for, like police cars, the 2007 Crown Victoria that you're going to let the fire department use as practice when there are towing companies that give you free cars for this. It has money value. It should be put on public surplus and auctioned off. And all the materials that you gave away down here at the grain building you tore down, that should have been on public surplus and auctioned off. It was on Facebook of something like that, which I don't know who even gets that. Anyway, it's a concern to me that you're wasting taxpayers' money just handing it out. Even if you cut down trees that are in the way, dangerous, you pile up the wood, you put it up for auction. I see that in public surplus all the time, and it might alleviate some of the costs of you having to raise our taxes and assess values on our sewers and all that stuff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will close public comment at 7:23, and we will move right into public hearing. I don't know if, did anybody sign up for public hearing? So, I will open public hearing at 7:24, and this is for the 2019 annual budget and also for the utility tax rates. Are there any names there, John? No? Okay, thank you for checking. Is there anyone who would like to address that? Either one of those, either the 2019 annual budget or the utility taxes? Okay. Well, then, I will close public hearing at 7:24, and we will move into discussion of that. This is the second reading for both of them. We'll begin with the 2019 annual budget. Doug, do you have anything you'd like to share with us regarding that?
Just quickly, this is our third and final hearing on the 2019 budget. On November 7th, we had the opportunity to go through the budget line by line. So, tonight, you see the budget ordinance in its final form. You'll notice it's in summary, so each fund shows as a total rather than showing all of the detail, and that's the appropriate format for a budget ordinance to go through. So, tonight, the staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing, which we just have, and then, second, the requested action is to adopt ordinance 1908-18.
And that would be on 74. Is there a motion? How about discussion?
It's been well discussed already.
Okay. So, then, do we have a motion?
Was it 1908-17?
Yes. 1908-18.
I make a motion to pass the budget, or 1908-18?
So, there is a motion to adopt ordinance 1908-18. That's adopting the annual budget for the City of Cedar Woolley, Washington, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. So, do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. We have a second by Councilman Owen. Owen in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the utility tax rates.
I'll go ahead and pick this one up with Aaron's absence. This one is the second reading tonight as well. Just briefly, what the utility tax ordinance does, it proposes an increase in the city's own utilities, utility tax rate from 7.5% to 9.5%. The 2% from this action would make the following additions that are included in our 2019 budget. One is a full-time FTE in our technology department. The second is increase in existing half FTE position or full-time equivalent in the police department evidence area to a full-time position. And then, the third and final item is to cover part of the Phase 1 design and engineering work on the future Public Works building. It's just the initial piece on that. As I mentioned before, these are included in the 2019 budget. Tonight's action is to hold a public hearing, which we've completed, and then to adopt an ordinance implementing the increase in utility taxes.
All right. Thank you, Doug. So, the ordinances, the recommendation is actually found on page 78, and this will be ordinance 1914-18.
May I have, may I please just ask a question about this?
Absolutely.
I was wondering if, to the recommendation for the motion, could we add somewhere in there that what the increase is? I mean, it doesn't say anywhere in there what the increase is, 2%. Is that normal? Isn't that usually in the motion with the increases?
It could be added into a whereas line if we want to do that.
Oh, I see.
If we want to say amend the ordinance to include but approve it with that change.
Okay.
The numbers that show in the body of the ordinance and cells, even though they don't say it's increasing 2%, they show the increased number. But it is helpful sometimes to put in the whereas introductions just so somebody reading it knows what's contained inside the ordinance. So, we could add that as a whereas line to the ordinance if you would like.
I think that'd be great. So, then, we just, do we just pass it now and then let the contingency that that will be added?
Correct.
Okay.
Question on this for you, Doug. Also, on page 78, it does say that for comparison, our neighbors' utility rates are, and then it goes into Anacortes at 7, Burlington at 6, Leconner 8.1, and Mount Vernon at 7. And then, it says upon passage of this ordinance, Cedar Woolley would be at 9.5. Am I understanding that that then makes us the highest?
Yes, it does on that comparison.
Are other cities also looking at these rates?
Some are looking at them. One of the things that happens when you look at different parts of the state of Washington, some states are, have a little more fortunate position when it comes to sales tax. So, you'll see those cities with the higher sales tax level.
Burlington. Burlington.
Correct. They'll, they get that, so they're able to keep their utility tax rates a little bit lower. Where you have cities where that teeter-totter kind of goes the other direction, the sales tax is lighter, typically, their utility tax rate is a little bit higher than the surrounding communities. And that's what you see here on a per capita basis with our neighbors. We have a lower sales tax rate. Therefore, it's not unusual to see the utility taxes slightly higher than those same jurisdictions.
So, the sales tax rates or the sales tax earned?
Sales tax earned in dollars collected per capita.
All right. So, any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
No. I'll make a motion that we approve the utility tax rates as written.
As it is written?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
With the contingency of the table?
Well, his motion, the motion on the table is that it's as written.
Oh, I see.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, everyone, yes? Can I show a hand just to make sure? Yes? And then, DeYoung, no? Okay. So, we have, all right. And that was, oh, we had ordinance 1914-18. Okay, so, moving on then to unfinished business, the updates to the building, planning, and engineer fee schedule. Sean, do you want to take this?
Pardon me. Absolutely. These are just updates to our fee schedules, just making some minor adjustments in areas that have been lacking and updating fees to more realistically cover the cost of the amount of time that the planning department spends on things. There are actually two ordinances in here, a resolution and ordinance. One is a resolution for the fee schedule, and the second is an ordinance changing, eliminating the duplicate plan review fee for building permit review.
So, is there any discussion? Do you have a motion to, the motions are actually, the recommendations are actually on page 82. And the first is a motion to approve resolution, and this will be Resolution 1010-18. It's a resolution adopting and updating of the building, planning, and engineering fee schedule.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1010-18, a resolution adopting an updated building, planning, and engineering fee schedule.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion by Cornigay and Kinzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And the second then is to make motion to approve ordinance number, and this will be ordinance number 1916-18, and ordinance repealing Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 15.04, .045, therefore eliminating the duplicate plan review discount. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1916?
Yes.
-18, an ordinance repealing Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 15.04.045, thereby eliminating the duplicate plan review discount.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So, we have motions by Kinzer and Cornigay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, now, we will move on to new business, and that is coming back to what Mr. Freiburger talked about, and this is the contract.
Oh, you missed one. Did you miss something?
I'm sorry.
Under-
Did I miss something?
Business.
Oh, I did. Okay, so, sorry. Yes. So, thank you. So, we have the 2019 salary ordinance, and this already has a number, 1909-18, page 82. Not 82, page, where's that at? Page 98. So, Doug?
For this ordinance, this is the second reading on the city's annual salary ordinance. This is usually done in conjunction with budget, if you've worked on these in previous years. What is incorporated in this table is a 2.5% cost of living increase for nonrepresented employees. All the other represented employees already have their cost of living items incorporated in their union agreements, so we don't have to address those. So, the recommended action for this evening is to adopt ordinance 1909-18.
Okay. And what did you say the percentage was on that?
2.5%.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Is it written somewhere?
Yes, on 99. Yeah, you can work it in there.
How is the 2.5% determined to be the correct rate to go with?
There's a couple of different things that we looked at. One is, it is the average that are in the, represented in the union agreements. One of the union agreements was at 3%, one of the other ones was at 2%. So, we found a point in the middle that did that. We then compared that with things like the Seattle area CPIU, which is the urban wage earners' cost of living index for salaries and wages and things like that. It's not just a Seattle area, but they call it that because it's the most largest metropolitan area near it. So, we take those things and average those together, and then we look at what can we afford to do at the same time. So, then, it's looking at what is the impact of a 1% increase in looking at those things. So, it comes down to just a number that seems to fit within our fund balance and within our revenues that we can do. And that 2.5% number is what was determined to be in that midpoint.
So, are you saying that part of that was based on the fact that we voted to increase our property taxes by 1%?
No.
Okay.
There's no correlation to that.
Okay.
Yep.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1909-18.
So, we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1909-18 establishing the salaries and the wages for elected officials and employees of the City of Cedar Woolley of Washington for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, motion by Cornigay, seconded by Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was Dunleavy, by the way.
Oh, sorry. Very sorry. Dunleavy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, now, we will move on to the late materials, the possible contract with Fisher Construction Group for the water waste treatment plant improvement project. So, is there any more discussion or questions? And this will be, this will be Resolution 1011-18. Do I have a motion?
We already have the monies allocated for this. I make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this contract with Fisher &amp; Sons, Resolution Number 1011-18.
Yep. Okay, so, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So, I have motion by Kelly and Cornigay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that is it. Are there any questions or concerns regarding the informational items? If not, good of the order? Anything for the good of the order? So, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.